Okay.
Hey.
Anne streaming.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Webster Board of Education Budget Adoption, May 21st, 2020, in a Zoom conference. Would everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Calling the meeting to order, can we have a motion to move out of executive session, please?
So moved.
Mike and a second agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
And do we see any alteration to the agenda? Finances, okay. Then we will move on to board business, the new business, the resolution for the budget adoption, and the reason for our meeting. Brian?
All righty, let me share my screen and take over from...
To this work, this difficult work, full of many unknowns.
All right, does everybody see a slide?
Yep.
2020-21 final budget adoption? And thank you, everybody, for your flexibility. I'm sure the governor thanks you as well. We went right up until...
Oh, he froze.
I lost.
Did we lose Brian?
Yeah.
First.
Oh, there you go. My internet connection is unstable.
Are you on your hotspot?
I'm plugged into the dock. I actually got a whole new docking station today, too.
Try it again. That's all right. Try it again.
Take two.
Okay.
How are we doing now? I don't want to touch anything.
Good.
Yeah, good.
So our quick agenda for this evening, workshop number two recap. It's been a while, so we'll kind of pick up from there. Where we were, final budget changes, what our budget numbers look like, state aid updates, some new state aid numbers, and then Q and A for everybody. So as a refresher, here was our previous budget total from workshop number two, a 3.33% increase over the 1920 budget. This is just for your reference, we're carrying this over. You know, talked a little bit about why are we delayed. This was, tonight is the last legal now under the new rules any board in New York State could adopt a budget. Was trying to hold out hope for as much information as possible through this process. You know, what kind of direction, just get some kind of sense of direction, you know? Obviously, I picked a profession that has a lot of formulas and inputs and outputs, and you know, so I've, you know, wanted to take away as much of the unknown as possible. You know, I think, you know, hopeful for any kind of federal type of information coming as well. But here we are tonight with really no updates. So what's kind of changed since the last workshop? In short, not much of any tangible changes have happened since we had the workshop in mid-April. A lot of what-ifs, and a lot of focus on how to respond to the what-ifs, the potential of something might happen, and developing plans for that. So what is possible, and I put this up here for discussion, because we're all getting lots of rumors from Albany, you know, the School Business Administrators Association, the Council of Superintendents, New York State School Boards Association, Monroe County School Boards Association. You know, I don't think we can go an hour, hour and a half without an email from a different group that is telling us, well, here's the latest, here's the latest of, you know, what's going on. And there's a lot of rumors around these advocacy groups. So when will we land on some numbers? So there's a lot of things going around, so I wanted to put some hard numbers to what's out there for you. So we have foundation aid and total aid, because a lot of the speculation is, when cuts come from the state, where's that going to be? Where are we going to hit? Are we going to hit foundation aid, or is this total aid? So our foundation aid number, now this is all per the last legislative output that I shared with you. The runs that we all got was flat, same as last year, 29 million. So what's 10%, 15%, and 20% of that if they laser focus on foundation aid? Because, you know, they're talking anywhere from a 10% to 20% cut. I know the governor always uses 20% quite a lot in his press conferences, but when you peel back some of the numbers, it could vary anywhere from 10% to 20%. So I put that out there. But then, you know, what if it's total aid? You know, this is what the legislator projected on the books, what our aid would be. Now, just to remind everybody, those, a lot of them are based on estimates. You know, when you think about transportation aid, BOSI's aid, aids that are impacted by enrollment, such as library textbook aids, students with disabilities, you know, the public and private excess costs, those all get wrapped up when we report final June 30th numbers to the state in September. And then we get some actual state aid numbers that are real and true. So the total amount of aid is going to look very different than what is on the aid output reports that the legislature approved. So this is kind of like a moving target. How do you cut a moving target if you don't exactly know what it is? So I kind of think that if the targets are going to focus around foundation aid, because that's the one thing that is stable. So just my opinion in two cents, that's where we'll be. So these are kind of the numbers that will be banded about. If you see, now you have a frame of reference, if, you know, you hear before I do that, okay, the cut's coming, or you kind of have the frame of mind, if it's foundation aid, or if it's total aid, here's some data to kind of help frame your thought process when you hear that information. Next is just a reminder, what do we know? There's the four look-back periods for fiscal monitoring. We were actually waiting right now on that very first look-back period of April 1 to April 30th. That was the first kind of benchmark, and we're on May 21st and haven't seen anything. I actually now, I don't think we're going to see anything until after the budget process concludes into mid-June. I don't think we'll see that look-back period. I think we're in the middle of a kind of a cat and mouse chicken game with the federal government around the stimulus bill. So I honestly don't think we'll see something until actually probably mid-June right now. But those are the four look-back periods. So when you play these forward, if the same timeframe works out, June 30th, we probably won't hear until August for about that look-back period. December, probably be January, February, and then the March one will probably be towards the end of next fiscal year as well. So a lot of, we do know there's four lookbook periods, but we don't know what coincides with that. So I put this in there, you know, we're unlikely to receive hard numbers by budget adoption. And I think I had this as a hold, but it's true, we don't have any kind of hard numbers. So how do we react to these cuts? You know, we're on the last day of budget adoption, so we kind of had to do something and prepare for that. So what are we looking at to address this? Spending freezes with some, obviously, health and safety urgent exemptions to start the new fiscal year. No overtime allowed, so cutting back on some of those things that we do after hours. Traveling conferences, and this is why I like to call, we're nibbling around the edges in case the cuts aren't as draconian as possible. Maybe there is a federal stimulus program that gets passed that doesn't get us to exactly 100% whole, like the governor's hoping, but it gets us, you know, somewhat there. Or maybe the economic numbers aren't as bad as projected. So I call these, you know, nibbling around the edges, you know, some things that, you know, will feel a sting, but it's not pain, it won't be as painful as some other possibilities. So almost like a phase one or a step one in the process to react to what these cuts could possibly look like. Okay? What about rolling cuts? You know, we talked about those three phases. How do we deal with those rolling cuts throughout the year? So items being looked at in preparation for that. You know, position justification has become open for replacement. Is it a mandated type of position? Looking at attrition for retirements as those come along. And it doesn't just have to be the June 30th retirements. You know, half of our district are employees that are on different retirement systems and different cycles. So we do get off that July 1 to June 30th retirement cycle, so as those become up. And then the additional use of reserves. I put the unemployment reserve in here, because I'll touch on that and focus as that as part of our plan moving forward. So some of these things are, you know, it's like kind of a phase two, a little bit more painful, a little bit, you know, but no one's negatively impacted under these. There's no layoffs, there's nothing that really is painful to individuals under this kind of process with the rolling cuts. So next up, so weathering the storm then, what, based on what we know? You know, it's tough to announce large reductions. So if even on the most conservative side, we go back to those projections, the worst cut possible is $10 million. So, you know, should we make decisions that go right to the worst possible scenario? And I think it's tough to announce those large reductions to get a budget target we don't know. Because what if we miss it? We've just done some irreparable damage that we might not have had to do. And frankly, I don't want to take that chance and do that change and impact programming if not absolutely necessary. So I think the prudent thing would be to wait it out. In slides six and seven that we just kind of went over, or seven and eight, excuse me, give us a toolbox of ideas and possibilities and get the thought process going to adapt to all these challenges next year. You know, proud of the work we've done with the leadership team and administrative cabinet about, you know, looking at a lot of these things, and it's, you know, given us that toolbox. But, you know, like, we've been preparing for this possibility for at least the last six years that I've been here at Webster and beyond. You know, we do a lot of long-range planning, we do a lot of work with the reserves every January, we review that and do targets. You know, we've built back some fund balances and reserves we lost during the Great Recession, perhaps not to the exact level that we went into the Great Recession with, but we have in the last five fiscal years, built back reserves to kind of help us for this. So we've been preparing for the inevitable cyclical downturn that is always shows itself in the municipal economies that are so dependent on state aid. Before I jump into state aid updates, any questions on that, kind of the thought process there? All right, so let's take a look. So as we're waiting diligently...
I'm talking, I had you on mute.
Oh, okay.
That's why I'm saying, why, he doesn't want to listen to me? You know, I think, you know, this really speaks to the amount of work that you and the leadership team have done behind the scenes to prepare for potential small, large, medium cuts in aid. There's a lot of things that we don't know. Probably the best thing we know is that what we know today won't be true in two months or three months, and we're going to have to react. And the fact that you've done the necessary preparation to be prepared to react quickly, I think is what's really important. So thank you for doing that.
So to segue then onto the state aid side of things, we know there's a cut coming, so what can we start looking at? Or do, what can we, you know, kind of plan for? So I knew there was going to be something cut. And so I wanted to take a look at what, to me, makes the most reasonable sense. So this is the state aid from the perspective, what we looked at last time in the workshop around state aid. And we were introduced to the pandemic adjustment and the CARES restoration. So the federal government gave, the state took away, we are even Stephens. You know, nothing other than losing the $90,000 in foundation aid increase, we were really held harmless. But that pandemic adjustment was calculated for a reason, and it's there for a reason. And I kept, as we were thinking about this process, kept going back to that, that any kind of reductions would kind of come along the same lines as this pandemic adjustment. So try to look at a best estimate for doing some cuts upfront on the front side, what does that look like? So we took about 40% of the pandemic adjustment, which is a little over $300,000, and did some calculations, because one of the economic indicators that was coming out of Albany would be that it would be a 40% increase over the pandemic adjustment would be some of the early April cut. So we're thinking, you know, an extra $300,000 to $400,000, let's start there. So that's where you see here for our aid adjustments. I worked the foundation aid, we had a small adjustment to high-cost excess aid through this process, you know, $196. But looking through the foundation aid, okay, let's back out roughly that amount, and let's work on how could we, you know, prepare for a first cut that might be the smallest one of all of them, and just set that on the road to July 1. So we looked at that amount, kind of tied it to the pandemic adjustment, and came up with this new budget total, $183,278,876. So how did we not get the full reduction in state aid? Where did that come from? That I just showed you on the last slide, and it really came from the three things that we did. The first was, is actually added more revenue. So we didn't cut all of that state aid on the expenditure side. We added $140,000 in unemployment reserve on the revenue side. So it wasn't all budgetary reductions that we looked at, we looked at what other revenues could we get to offset the lack of state aid? So we're using the unemployment reserve. Why the unemployment reserve? Because we know our claims are already going up based on our history in the last eight to nine weeks of how many claims have come in, and how many might come in. So if you remember from workshop one, this is the exact amount we budget for. So we thought, the use of reserves, we could add this and use this to pay what our estimated claims are next year, should those increase, or we need to just use it to offset. So the $140,000 is the exact amount, so we got that to help offset. And then we looked at the difference through two things, item reductions. We have BOSI's, took another hard look at our BOSI's lines, and took out some software that wasn't really a priority, that we kind of duplicate, nice-to-haves. So we took those out. And then supplies, travel, and memberships, I think you'll see some line items on that end were removed to eliminate some professional memberships, and some supplies and travel and reimbursements there. And then took a hard look at enrollment, and were able to save on, you know, not having as many overages on the secondary level. So saved some there based on enrollment in courses over this time, because we were gifted some additional time to look at that stuff as compared to a normal budget cycle. And then looked at one reduction of a position due to enrollment that won't need to be replaced. So that's where you get your salary reductions for. So I'll note, those three items together give us that buffer of losing an estimated $327,000 more in state aid. So it's a start, it was hooked to the pandemic adjustment at this time, but doesn't have any hard teeth into what the governor could really do. It was just a start, kind of a best guess of where we're going to be. And then the other part, too, is how can we prepare for mid-year cuts? You know, historically, we spend 96% to 98% of the budget. If you go look at our audits that share this information, depending on the year, we're anywhere from 96% to 98%. Generally, right there at 97%, but depending on the year, if we had something different go on, or had some savings, that's the range where we spend 96% to 98% of the entire budget year to year. So what would it look like to switch that to a 90% to a 94% of the budget? How do we do that? How do we go about that? All those things we discussed right away, you know, that get us down to that level. So only spending, you know, if I do a 97% down to a 92%, you know, that saves us $9 million alone. And, you know, that's talking about, you know, no ordering, no spending freeze, attrition, reducing some energy bills, you know, changing those thermometers, you know, layering a little bit more in the winter, and perhaps not running the air conditioning at a certain level in some buildings. That also could look at reduction of small appliances throughout buildings, you know, look at energy efficiencies. So there's things that we could do to get us to a target as we look at the mid-year cuts based on controlling the overall amount of spending in the district, in the fiscal year budget. So within the broader number, we just pare down what we actually spend. So as revenues actually come down compared to budgeted revenues, we bring down the actual expenditures in comparison, is how we would prepare for mid-year cuts. It avoids, you know, needing to adjust the budget or need to amend it in any way. It's just, we reduce our practices around spending through purchasing and hiring. And then just the remaining budget process, so tonight would be budget adoption. The budget hearing is set for May 28th, and then June 9th is absentee vote day. And I will point out, there is nothing in the executive budget right now that points out to a specific date for a revote, or a process for a revote, should anybody in the state's budget not pass on June 9th. And from what Cindy and myself and Lisa have been working through on finding election workers, it would be quite a heavy task to repeat this process again with a June 30th deadline. So we're actually probably waiting for some more executive orders coming out, perhaps on what a revote would look like if necessary, versus adopting a contingent budget right away.
And then, so Brian, also, there's no guidance on where these additional costs are coming from? Or if we're receiving assistance for that?
Yeah, no additional assistance is coming for that. The costs right now, just that were, normally a budget vote costs us anywhere between $5,000 and $7,000 between paying election workers, renting the machines, renting the truck to deliver them, you know, getting it set up, printing ballots, generally somewhere in the $5,000 to $7,000 range. So not overly burdensome. This is going to approach possibly anywhere between $50,000 and $75,000 to pull off, depending on the final postage bill, and how many come back to us. Because we are running on a more of a business style on everything that we send out, we're only going to get charged on what actually comes back to us and pay the postage on that. So, yeah, it has a wide swath, because, you know, for every ballot that comes back, we will get charged for that. So much different financial process going on now. And a lot of letters, a lot of envelopes, and a lot of sheets of paper heading out to printing presses. Any questions? Anything specific you want to rekind of touch on? You know, I've posted a majority of the materials, I will post this presentation on to the budget website. I've linked it here for everybody, for reference. You'll find the workshops and the materials there, the property tax report cards, all the other legal documents as well that are required.
All right, I have a quick question. Sorry. Go ahead. Hello?
Yeah.
Okay. So the memberships and the travel that was cut, where did that come from?
So that came, that was two memberships that we have a general membership that falls under, it's like a district-based memberships, where that would come from, it's called School Association Dues. That is the New York State School Boards, or excuse me, that's the National School Boards Association.
Okay.
And...
We know, we talked about it, but I wasn't sure what the final result ended up being.
Yep.
Yes, you are.
One is a member, a couple international memberships for myself in the business office that we get magazines for. You see that out of the business office, some reductions there. And traveling conferences were across the board for a couple places.
Okay, great, thank you. And also, did we end up... So did we have to pay our IT for holding the fieldhouse for graduation? Or do we just not have to pay anything for this year?
We have not sent them any money for this year.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, I was wondering, how long is it going to take to count all the ballots in your estimation?
Well, I think we got a good system on using the system that we use region scoring on, that Eric Blask has helped set up, because the voting machines weren't available from the county to be able to do it the traditional way. We knew that early on in the process. So I think the labor-intensive part is going to be opening all the ballots and just getting that organized on the front end.
Is it a double embroidered system?
Yeah, Cindy is actually going to do a tutorial that we're going to share, I think she's going to tape that tomorrow to show, because there is so many pieces of paper that I think it could be overwhelming, and there's different envelopes, specific envelopes to send it back in. So Cindy's going to do a tutorial for everybody on, you know, how to go through that, just to kind of maybe help us on the front end to organize the actual counting of it. But we're sending out a lot of ballots, and so it all depends on how many come back. Normally, we're around 4,000 to 4,500 walk-in voters at Trader. Who knows how many sheets of paper we'll get back? Could it be 10,000, 15,000, 20,000, 25,000? It could be significant, and the majority of our time will be opening those up. The scanning part, I think, is going to be the easy part, and reading, reading that, it's going to be the opening and verifying that it's going to be the time. I would imagine we wouldn't have official results for at least 48 hours. As you can see later on in the consent agenda, I think we're up to almost maybe 35 workers to help assist with this process in preparation.
Thank you.
And Cindy, feel free to chime in. I mean, I know she's doing a recruiting effort as well to find people to help. But I think we're around 35, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, next week I'll have additional people for your approval, so we're building the team.
And we're still learning something new every day about this. It really is, um, very, very, um, you know, interpreted. You know, the executive order as it was rolled out, uh, you know, how many ballots have to be in there? You know, couldn't you put two in one? Does it, is there enough paper? Can the printer, um, put all this together and feed it through in a mass way? So, you know, we got some clarification along the way, um, and still are getting some clarification. We, we did about a two-hour Q and A with, uh, school attorneys, um, with people from across the state. And, and got that chance to ask some of those, some of those questions, you know, around how, how do we do social distancing through this process? What's an appropriate amount of people? Do we have to provide, uh, a certain amount of room spaces, you know, just to try to get some direction on that? You know, is the third floor going to be big enough here at Spry to be able to spread people out? Really trying to work through those nuts and bolts, um, to pull this off.
And are we sending ballots to everyone in, in the town?
Yep, all the zip codes, um, that are affiliated with the district.
And, and was that a part of the executive order?
That there was, that was part of the initial, uh, confusion. Some school districts have done voter rolls and registrations, so they had every address. That's not something we've ever done, um, because we're in two counties, four towns. That would have taken a substantial amount of time for us to lift that. So we did get clarification. It could be a bulk mailing to the zip codes, um, to the households and then we could verify from there.
Because I read about some school district that was trying to send ballots to anyone who had voted over in the budget, over the last six years. And I was thinking, that can't be right, according to the executive order.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, there's some, you know, if there's districts, if you have multiple polling places, if you're a larger district or a spread out over, you know, a large square footage, if you have, uh, one poll in one corner and another on the other, you have to go through the voter registration process. With the multiple, so you, you would have all that kind of on your fingertips. Um, and that's something we didn't have right on our fingertips.
Okay. Thanks.
And I know we as a board have discussed where we can cut back on our expenses in our budget. And ours is a pretty lean budget, but we're going to give up our National School Board Association membership and the travel costs associated with that. If we decide that anyone wants to go to attend, we're still able to do that. And then it's also, as you're speaking to the gaps in the executive order. There are many districts within Monroe County who are considering, um, also dropping New York, New York State School Board Association due. And that's a savings of about twelve to thirteen thousand dollars. So we may consider doing that as well. There's a meeting that was supposed to occur last night to make that decision. But knowing so many districts are doing the same Zoom conference that we're doing because budgets had to be adopted. That meeting has been postponed a little bit, although it's still within this tight timeframe. So, um, just as you're addressing all the gaps that were not specified in the order. You know, every other school district in the state is, is in the same boat that we are. And everyone is just working hard and trying to do their best and learning from webinars and reaching out to others to, uh, just as Karma has been doing with all the area superintendents, um, Zoom conference.
And I, I'm very appreciative of the flexibility. I know there are multiple districts had adopted a budget early and then they went and re-adopted a different budget. And I, I thought in my, in my opinion, recommendation would have been it would just added more confusion to the process. If we would have had multiple budget adoptions before, um, and then the confusion around this whole new voting process would have just, I thought, muddied the waters a, a little bit. So we, uh, time was on our side, so, uh, why not, uh, take advantage of it? I know it, it created the semblance of maybe there was just nothing but crickets, because that's what we were hearing out of Albany. But it was truly just to try to buy that time, um, and to, to get any kind of semblance of, of data or information coming out of the state.
No, and we all trusted in, in your work and your, um, guidance in terms of where you were leading us and your, your rationale for doing so. So the, the efforts are greatly appreciated by all of us, that's for sure. So if there's not any further discussion, can we entertain a motion to adopt the resolution for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget notice?
Don't move.
You second by Jan. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then moving on to the actual budget notice.
Sure. So the budget notice, sorry, I'm just gonna, wrong one. So the budget notice hasn't changed much. This comes from SED every year. They actually have not sent out an updated one, so I've just kind of reused the last one. It's the same information, uh, every year. You have last year's adopted budget, you have last year's tax levy, uh, information. And then this year's proposed and then, uh, the final contingency budget number, uh, as well. And a little bit more information I put on this year compared to last, I put the description of the school buses. Just as for more information versus, uh, what they normally ask for us, uh, just to put in there the one proposition that we have. Um, and then the basic star exemption impact, uh, right now, that's, you know, about six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Then had to change, um, what our voting was, the annual budget vote is no longer, uh, the third Tuesday in May. So changed that up, uh, and then threw on the part we always, uh, we always do about our proposition in the, just for information about our transportation limits, um, in regards to state that we set. Shorter, uh, transportation limits than the state, uh, mandate has. So that's the budget notice, not much changed year over year, besides a little bit more information, um, on the proposition one.
Okay, thank you for that. Does anybody have questions about the budget notice? Everyone okay? And we have a motion, please, to accept the budget notice.
So moved.
My gas, second.
Second, Michael.
Michael, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and motion carries as well. And moving on to the property tax report card.
Uh, so the property tax report card, uh, changed last year and I'll show you that on the bottom part. But I'm going to just highlight right here for you, the, this, if there's a zero here, that means we're tax cap compliant. And we just need a simple majority for the budget. So we are tax cap compliant. So we do, we just need the simple majority to approve the budget. And then this was added last year, a schedule of reserve funds, uh, just to point out what reserves we have. And now this is not every reserve that is eligible, um, under New York State municipal law. These are just the only reserves that we have as Webster Central School District. They've asked us to put our actual balance on three thirty-one and then an estimated for June thirtieth and the reasoning behind it. So this was actually a best guess estimate dating back, uh, to three thirty-one of where we would finish the year. We submit this in the New York State portal, um, and it's actually due, uh, tonight. So I, I've submit this as soon as this meeting is over, uh, cause you adopt the budget first and then you submit the property tax report card. Uh, so you, this is just the best guess of where we're going to land six thirty. But I'll have more information in June for the board, uh, when we do look at end of the year transfers and final fund balance and final, um, financial updates for you. So, um, this, uh, just is kind of an overview that was added last year to the property tax report card. It used to end right here, at the schedule of reserve funds, everything above is still the same. This is the new part, uh, went from a one pager to a two-page report. And then these actual, this is right off our audit of where we were. We finished last year at three point four six when our max limit is four. So estimated for, uh, next year, always estimate to be right at four percent. But that changes year after year.
And thank you for that. Does anybody have any comments or questions about the property tax report card?
I just have one question for Brian. Brian, the unemployment reserve, is that a one-for-one, um, cost? So if a district employee collects a hundred dollars a week, the district has to reimburse the state a hundred dollars a week? Or is it a percentage of that?
It's, um, it's a, it's a shared percentage. It goes back to everybody that that employee worked with in the last eighteen months. So what we're seeing, yeah, what we're seeing right now in our unemployment is a lot of, uh, part-time substitutes. We're seeing a lot of the college kids, um, that did summer work for us, but also work someplace else. So it, it, it's not a full shot like a, a normal full-time employee would be. So they're minimal amounts, but there, there's a lot of them.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. But yeah, we, I guess Mike to, now I'm thinking through your question a little bit more. Yeah, we do a pay-as-you-go, not the, um, not the flat rate into the system.
Okay.
Anyone else? Are we okay? Okay, then can we have a motion, please, to accept the property tax report card? So is it Linda?
It was.
And Sue.
Back goodbye Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you very much. Brian, we know we may have to amend this. And appreciate that you have aired on the side of caution and patience throughout this entire process. And tried to be as inclusive as you possibly can, not knowing as much as you weren't able to find out. So we appreciate your efforts on our behalf.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Yes, thank you.
And finally, moving on to the consent agenda. It includes the resolution to appoint the acting clerk, chairperson, chief inspector, assistant clerks and inspectors of election and the annual election and budget vote held via absentee ballot, as Brian has talked about. Any questions regarding the consent agenda?
Nope.
Okay, can we have a motion to accept that, please? That was Maria, second.
And Sophia.
And Sophia, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. I would just like to add a thank you. My next door neighbor, Cody Pastine knocked on my door a few weeks ago to ask about a 3D printer, because she had, she had a design for face shields. They made thirteen thousand, six hundred and fifty face shields for area healthcare workers in hospitals and urgent care centers. I'm going to thank her formally myself, but they're at the point where they've exhausted their supply chain and filled all the orders that they can. They're now looking to fill orders for out-of-state needs. These individuals are just absolutely remarkable to see a need like that rise to the occasion. They created a group of assemblers and a group of delivery people and it just, uh, they deserve all of our thanks. And then also I thank you to Bolter for the
Oh, yes.
railers that hopefully everybody's seen and hopefully all our seniors have seen, uh, that move around, kind of a giant Where's Waldo? Thank you to the seniors celebrating. The Bolters have always been supportive of this community in numerous ways. And, um, strictly just from the bottom of their hearts for, for no other reason. And we're, we're grateful to have them in our community and that they've recognized our seniors in this way. And then also a thank you to the PTSAs for the science that they bought to celebrate the seniors and their traveling, beeping, yelling caravans and all the joy that they brought to celebrate our seniors. So we're all staying tuned and patient as well for, for graduation as they unfold. And as always, we will comply with what is recommended and with the safety of everyone first and foremost. So with that, I believe we have covered everything. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add? No, awkward, awkward Zoom silence. And can we have a motion for Jern, please?
Don't move.
Jan, in a second. Second by Sue. Excellent, thank you everybody so much. See you next week. Thank you. All, be safe.
Thank you.